To just let everybody know to please speak loudly into your mics so that everyone at home can hear our session. And I guess we will start with Chief Humphries. Okay. Mr. Darty, our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. I just wanted to preface Chief's presentation that this is an information workshop. This is an approved and funded project, and this is just to give you as many facts about the project as we possibly can. And I will turn it over to Chief Humphries.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Can you hear me? You good? Is it on? You got me?
That's good.
There you go. All right. Thank you, first of all, for kind of hearing us out tonight. I've got a pretty extensive presentation. We, you know, the first slide here, I want to say the firing range project has already been approved by a previous board at the Daslem location. The funding has improved for that location also, for that site. But what I wanted to do tonight was kind of give you a lot of information because you're the sitting board now, and I also want to reach out in this to all the people there in Facebook land, the Fairview there now, citizens of Fairview, the stakeholders, so they too can have this information. So it's very important. I ask if you let me run through this. It's pretty lengthy, if you save your questions to the end, so we don't get sidetracked and lose that time because I think CC has a bit of a presentation behind mine. And also because there is a lot of detailed information, I will email each of you my presentation tomorrow, so you'll have all that information should you want to vet that information to see if it's true and accurate, if you want to, you know, use that to support any argument that someone has against that. So really, it's going to be a lot here tonight, so just bear with me. The last thing on this is, before we move to next slide, is the site has been an approved location for public safety training. I've got abstract there because it is an approved site. Whether I have a firing range there or not, I can go out today and conduct training exercises there. If I, as long as I do so in a safe manner, in a natural earthen berm, I can do that. But what we want to do is, would you please back the slides up, please? Thank you. What we want to do is, we want to construct a range that engineered to maximize the safety. That's really what we're looking to do. And I'm going to kind of go through this whole thing and show you why it's imperative that we have something like that. First slide. Thank you. All right. First of all, if you're going to do any project, there has to be some credibility behind it, right? If you're going to build a skyscraper or whatever, you don't want me designing the sewer system for Fairview. So we're talking about a police project, right? So if we look at credibility, there needs to be some credibility to someone telling you you need this thing. First, next slide. So we're talking about police experience. If you look at my police staff, myself, my assistant chief, the captain over training and sergeant in training, and one of my firearms instructors, we have a cumulative of over 108 years of experience. That's 108 years of someone telling you, you need a firing range. And this presentation today is going to start, explain why that supports this. Instead of just someone telling you need it, we're going to support this. As to date, I have not had an email, a face-to-face, I could not find a citizen of Fairview, a stakeholder, that had an opposition or had any experience to say, "We shouldn't do that." I did, however, through the Bozo, we had a list of non-citizens of Fairview that you see here. I did peruse Google and LinkedIn and tried to see if I could credit them with some police experience, which I could not. Mr. Cruz did say in the Bozo meeting, he had retired law enforcement, but he then said in the lobby here one day that he retired a correction officer, so I couldn't credit that. But it's 108 years of telling you why you need this. So we're going to go through this. Next slide. So the first thing that comes to mind is safety concerns. What about this range? It's kind of been built outside of the apartment, the kind of opposition that these ranges, just outside the perimeter of those ranges, that it's just death and destruction, that it's not safe, and that all these things. So I want to look at some examples of what that is. First slide. This is the Tennessee Law Enforcement Training Academy at Metro Nashville, sits inside the city of Metro. Been there since the 60s. It actually existed before any of these things around it existed. If you will look at these distances, they're important. The Blue Line 485, 533, and 459, this is an apartment complex, a greenway walking space that's 485 feet away, and a workout facility. You would think that if there was some danger all the time, or even if one incidence, that the government would shut that down, they would move it to some location. Next slide. So if we look at the picture of right behind the academy, the first building to the right is, in the yellow over there, is the academy. Then there is this berm, which is a very small berm, it's not very extensive, and then you see there's no increase in topography, no elevation change, really flat. And right behind it, within those short distances, is our apartment complex and a fitness center, along with the, on the other side, the walking trail. So they exist. Recruits shoot there all the time. It's been there for years, since the 60s, no real incident. Move along to the next one. This is Dixon PD's range. We use this range now, just by, you know, their grace. Before I talk about these three distances you see here, if you look at that football field to the right, my son is actually practicing on that football field right now. I've been there with my son while people are shooting. I have conducted classes there while these young men are practicing on that field. It's just, it's a few hundred feet away. Centennial Elementary School is just to the south of this picture, 600 yards away. It was constructed three years after the range. Three years after that it opened. So I think the powers that be there thought that probably it was safe to put a school in that area. But if you notice 1, 2, and 3 there, this is going to be important, you'll notice this 1 is 65 feet, and I'm going to explain that here in just a second, but these areas of 1, 2, and 3 come about after that range was built. It's been there since 1996. Please go to the next slide. Number 1, it's a trail marker, a trail marker. It's that number 1 location behind that berm, behind where they shoot. Next slide. If you stand in that trail marker, from the trail marker, I'm standing at the chain link fence at the top of the firing backstop berm, approximately 65 feet away. The buffer wall, which is constructed back there, was, is depicted there in the star, does not cover the area of the berm that is in line with the walking trail. Just 65 feet away, the city decided, it's safe enough to put a walking trail behind the firing range. Next slide. Number 2 and 3 on there, number 2 is a disc golf area that was developed after the range was there. Again, the city deciding it probably safe enough to develop the park around this. If you look at number 2 there, just at the top there, you see the roof line of the range house. It is approximately 115 feet away. Number 3 is a disc golf tee box, it's 315 feet away, so they developed that right around there. Next slide. I was also informed by the director of the parks that the cross-country team runs on the trail. While I was gathering the pics to determine the distance, when we were on site, the cross-country team was training. On the left there is the road going to the range, and to the right is a gentleman that's entering the trailhead that runs behind that range. So we see that they do operate in some senses, they're safety and people develop things around them. Next slide. So if ranges are dangerous to the surrounding areas, you would assume there'd be strict federal, state, local guidelines, private ranges, insurance companies would equally regulate that in construction, so that it was safe. You know, in your mind, you probably think, large berms, buffers, baffles, things that would stop those rounds from exiting the range, to ensure maximize safety. Next slide. Now these next slides, I'm not in any way stating that any of these people and these businesses are doing anything unsafe, I'm just simply looking at their ranges. Middleton City Farms in Lunville, you see not a lot of berms, nothing there. Next slide. Strategic Advantage in Columbia, Tennessee, just one natural earthen berm there, nothing really encompasses it. Patriot Training, again, not a lot of berms. Next slide. Terry Walden Range in Coffee County, just a berm that exists there. B&amp;B Rifle Range in Ray County, there's a long-range rifle, no berms exist there. Next slide. You would think the state would do it better, right? This is a state-owned WMA, just a couple of piles pushed up with a dozer, public comes and goes they want. Next slide. Here's the Cherokee National Park, the federal government, they might even do it better. You see this little bitty, just kind of bumps in the hillside there, these are public ranges. They allow people to do this all the time. No real encapsulating of the range, nothing that stops those rounds. Next slide. So it is thrown out there, what about the wildlife? Well, here's the state of Tennessee's description of their definition of their wildlife areas. A WM area is protected, an area set aside for conservation of wildlife and recreational activities. Conservation. Firing ranges that exist inside of WM areas, 9. 9 public ranges inside of those areas. So obviously, probably not a lot of impact on the wildlife. U.S. Department of Interior work every day to protect our nation's special places and current and future generations can experience natural and cultural treasures for years to come. Their goal there, you see in the highlights, to protect a variety of resources. They operate 5 public firing ranges inside of there. People that are actually active in conservation, they exist. Next slide. So our range, so what does that look like in its concept? Next slide. Well, the first thing, we started with Dixon's range, and see these big, large berms. That's what we kind of started modeling after. You'll notice that Dixon's range has large berms, they've got a buffer wall, but behind it, where I stood on that trail, really no elevation change, it's just, it's just kind of flat back there. And they left a lot of the trees there as an extra buffer also. Next slide. So our range and its location, and I want you to pay attention closely earlier to those distances, those 400 feet to the walking trail of that, of the Toledo Academy. We've got some people that had some concerns, and our distance is 874 feet, 1312, 1468. Of course, these are, these are approximates, we just did it on the map, props not exact. But these distances are significantly further than ranges that exist in metropolitan areas or in parks. Next slide. So I had our city engineer, he pulled up a elevation diagram, a side diagram, if you will. So if you look down here at the first house that we talked about, the far right, the brown little measurement, is the elevation of that house. The far left will be where the range is, and it's not even dug down yet. But you see there's 40, 50 foot of elevation change, and there's this gigantic hillside between it. This mountainous hillside that's covered in trees. So, next slide. The second house, again, a large topography change, goes up long distance, gigantic. In my opinion, we're going to have a berm on this range also, but the natural topography lends to a very safe range. Next slide. The last one, again, the house is hidden behind a giant hillside. It's on the far right, the range will be on the far left. A ton of topography change that offers a natural barrier between the range and anything around it. Next slide. This was a drawing I got from CC. We wanted to talk about some of the angles. It was one of the things that we're going to shoot rifles and all this stuff, we're going to get into a lot of that here in just a second. But the purpose of the tower, if you'll see on the left, and the yellow was a downward angle shot, not only we're going to have a safe range, so we could maximize a downward angle shot, so no way we're trying to put rounds in the air and do anything like that. You see the brown angle's a 45-degree berm constructed there. And then it depicts, again, that natural topography going up to 850 feet, and I put a tree on there, there's tons of trees there, which act as additional buffers in that. So unbelievably safe. And that was the purpose of the tower, to teach that multi-angle shooting, but more importantly, to enhance the safety by downward angles, so that we, again, we're going to not put people in jeopardy. So one of the things that was said before, the tower height, I think in the Bozo meeting, someone said, "Well, you're setting an unbelievable, a precedent, a bad precedent, the city would approve things like that." Well, actually, the city has, you know, approved those and set a precedent. The music city center out by the interstate was 90-foot variance. I believe that the project beside us, the city, the music center was 90, the city center is approved in the site plan for 40. So you actually have done that to actual businesses and residents, when ours was simply going to be a training tower that we wouldn't occupy that much. Next slide. So one of the things now is to talk about, what are these bullets? You know, I know some of the rhetoric out there was, these bullets are going to travel miles. Well, what you need to understand is, there's such things as absolute trajectory. The two important factors on a bullet when it leaves the end of the barrel is gravity and drag, and those are hard forces on that bullet. So if you have a zero-degree angle and you're shooting flat on that range, that's exactly what that bullet's doing, it's dying. The moment it comes out of there, it's dying. So the best way I can kind of depict that is, if you watch football and you see a guy drop back the Hail Mary pass and he's trying to launch it as far as he can, he has to put as much arc on that as he can to get the distance, because the football's doing the same thing a bullet's doing. It's spinning, it's trying to defeat the air forces and gravity and go as far as it can. So if you took a, and this is important, because I'm going to have a 20-foot berm, that's the berm we're building, not to mention all this topography that goes upward. If you had a sniper rifle and you were on the range, and you decided you were going to shoot 1,000 yards, I'm going to shoot 1,000, that gun's about the arc to make that 1,000 yards. The top apex, the highest arc in that to 1,000 yards is 12 feet. It's as high as that bullet gets. It can't even exit the range. The berm's 20-foot high, it can't even exit the range at that point. It's going to hit the berm. Next slide. Here's going to be a lot of stuff, that's a lot of technical, and I'm going to send you this information. So I run ballistic data, actual ballistic data on the 223 round. Far left is your ballistic tables, and I was able to get those out to 2,000 yards. So 2,000 yards, and you'll see here, there's a reference to the school being somewhere around 2,900 yards away. And there was some claim that, are the schools safe? Will they be hit with a round? Well, at 2,000 yards, that bullet that's trying to fall, falls 364 feet. That's how far it falls. It's dying upon exit, and you've got a 60-foot hillside, and it's falling. So the school is 2,900 yards away. The ballistic drops about 1,500 feet at that distance. The kinetic, and it's important too, I mean, if we could get the round there, would somebody be hurt? And that's not our goal, to do that. We're going to contain everything on the range through discipline, training, and shooting. But the kinetic energy around would only be about 24-foot pounds of energy. The U.S. Army determined the minimum kinetic energy of a bullet for lethality is 58-foot pounds. It's really dying. You'll see at the top, the 223, 200, the 223 55-grain chart, I was able to get that chart out to 1,500, I mean, to 2,900 yards, and it's, like I said, a 1,500-foot drop. The 9mm round, which is also referencing that, you can see there, at 500 yards, it's a, I think, a 5 or 6-foot drop in that, and drops up to 250 feet out to 900 yards. Again, that bullet's dying dramatically in a range that has a berm and a large backstop with a lot of trees on it. Next one. So here's some things. Justification, why do we need the range then? You know, we've understood, we're going to build a safe range, the bullets have limitations, we're going to be disciplined, so justification. Next slide. Fair to train. Fair to train are significant lawsuits, they happen all the time, and I'm going to go over a few that are precedent-setting, that are relevant to us. The first one, City of Canton, Ohio versus Harris. United States Supreme Court held that the municipality may be held liable under 1983 for violations granted by the federal, guaranteed by the federal constitution where violations result in the municipality's failure to adequately train employees, only if that failure reflects deliberate indifference on the part of the municipality, on the constitutional right of its inhabitants. Now, when they say deliberate indifference, that's the bad one, that's when it costs you money. That's the one that says, "You knew that it was wrong, or you knew it had to be corrected, and you didn't even care enough to do anything about it." So we're going to start, show where that comes into play. Next slide. Canton continued here, "It requires little imagination to recognize that a firearm is an inherently dangerous tool that possesses numerous risks in the hands of unskilled persons. Accordingly, it is relatively simple matter to establish the need for training is so obvious." Now, when the court says something like "so obvious," they're really talking down to all of us. They're saying, you know, "You've got to be smart enough to know this exists." But a policy of providing no firearms and training, and we provide firearms training, it's not no, but you'll see how it always needs to be more. So the police officers who were be armed with them demonstrates a deliberate indifference to safety of the community. Canton also said, "The court used training on deadly force to illustrate the standard of deliberate indifference." The court noted that the city policymakers, y'all, you guys, know to a moral certainty that their police officer will be required to arrest fleeing felons. Moreover, the city has armed its officers with firearms in part to accomplish its task. In such a situation, the need to train officers, the constitutional limitations on the use of deadly force can be said to be so obvious that the failure to do so would properly, would properly be characterized as deliberate indifference to constitutional rights. So what standard's set here? We must train. That's the standard they set there. Next one. "In the case of Popeau versus City of Margate, we hold firearms training was inadequate, must include moving targets, low or adverse light shooting, residential, deadly force decision-making, instruction on state laws, city regulations, policies on shooting, and do so on a continuous basis. We must do so a lot." "In addressing the City of Margate's liability with respect to firearms training, the court noted that officer involved testified in his deposition that he was initially trained in deadly force at the police academy 10 years prior. His continued firearms training with respect to firearms consisted of going to the range twice a year." And I think, you know, in the Bozo meeting, someone said, "Aren't they just supposed to train, shoot once a year?" "The court noted that there was no training with respect to low-light conditions, moving targets, firing in residential areas. The court concluded it was entirely foreseeable that an officer from the City of Margate, largely a residential area like us, would have to pursue a fleeing felon, fleeing, moving suspect at night in low light. The court remanded the case back to the trial court after deciding the jury could find the training provided by the City of Margate to be grossly inadequate. Annual or semi-annual qualification courses are simply insufficient for purposes of assisting officers in making deadly force decisions or purposes of avoiding liability." So the standard's set there. You must train often, and you need to do so in adverse conditions. Next one. Last thing I'll reference here is the Jail versus the City in County of Denver, Colorado. The jury awarded damages found in the department's training program, which constitute only a movie and a lecture. We do more than that, but you'll see where they kind of hold us to a higher standard. Use of deadly force to be constitutionally inadequate. Federal appeals court upheld this result, finding that the training provided was inadequate and indicated that the city was deliberately indifferent, there's that word again, to the need of more training on the use of deadly force. The court found sufficient evidence to show that the officer's use of deadly force was unjustified. The appeals court criticized the city's lack of live-fire shooting and no-shoot drills, providing practice on when to shoot and not to shoot. Viewing that above evidence mostly favorable to the plaintiffs, the court concluded it is clearly sufficient to support the jury's determination that the Denver Police Department's training program in place prior to the shooting was inadequate, and that the direct connection existed between inaccuracy and the shooting. The court held that the Denver Police Department was deliberately indifferent to the need for better firearms training in its officers, and stated that inadequate training led to an officer's fatal shooting of an unarmed citizen. Standard's set there. We must train in live-fire decision-making drills. So we must train, we must do it often, we must do it in live-fire situations, that's where it happens on a range. Next slide. So what's the cost? Now, I'm not going to go on all these, but every one of these happened with a police officer and a firearm. Some of these happened with a citizen that was innocent. Some of these happened with citizens, that people, suspects that were guilty. But the end result was that somewhere the department didn't do, their due diligence and training up. We'll just scan 7.5 million, 1.2, 2.9, 3.5, 4.9. Next slide, please. 1 million, 4.5, 1 million, 10 million, 8 million, 12 million, I mean, it goes on and on. I'm going to send you this, you can research any of these, and most of these happened within 2022 now. A few of them are 27, 28, but most of them are current. Next slide. So here's the kind of coup de grace, Uvalde, Texas. If you know anything about Uvalde, Texas, it was unbelievable situation where officers stood there and did nothing. I will tell you today, after 30 years of being an officer, 20 of that, training tactical teams and the officers, I will tell you, if you do not train your officer to do something, you are training them to do nothing. That is a fact. 19 students and 12 teachers died that day because officers stood in the hallway and didn't do anything. Next slide. What is the cost? We don't know yet, but they filed a $27 billion class action suit. What I saw in that video, I think they should pay every penny of it. What's that going to do? If it's 1 billion, it's breaking that place, we couldn't survive here. You can't pay that cost. Ain't happening. Next slide. So here's the next thing. When you can debate this with people, and you start to say, "Hey, here are the reasons it's a safe range, we must do it, we're going to construct it in a manner," the default response is, "It's not what Ms. Booey wanted." That's what I hear all the time, "It's not what Ms. Booey wanted." She passed away 40-something years ago. I would argue that 95% of the people that say this never had a conversation with her, 5% did. I don't know they had it about her land. Neither did I have a conversation with her, I don't know either. So we can look to her papers and the facts. What was her wishes? Next slide. So her will references over to her deed, and in the deed, in section 5 there, "The City of Fairview shall not permit the use of firearms except by law enforcement officials." That's a pretty broad stroke there, saying, "Except them, they can do this thing." And the last, it says in number 8, "The City of Fairview shall be permitted to construct improvements as reasonable to necessary on the premises in pursuit of the purposes herein. The city shall be permitted to construct areas that would not detract from the purposes of which this advance." It's on the backside of the park, on a little piece of land that's on the other side of the road, that's not part of the park, and literally, it's a horrible piece of land holding the earth together. We're not ever going to make a park out of that thing. It's a great use. And when I talk about these elevation changes, I've crammed it in the deepest hole that Fairview owns, really the kind of the best spot for it. I don't know where else you could put it at Fairview that would offer that much. Next slide. So I'm about to wrap this up, I got this one page here. This is pretty lengthy, but as I said before, the first part of this was to offer some education and then some insight. Well, this is the insight, and this part of it's the most important to me as a police chief. It should be most important to citizens out there as they see me work through this, and to the board. So the cost of training is real, I mean, not training is real, the cost is actually lives, it's safety, it's security. You've seen the Uvalde incident where they did nothing, that's a, it's a very expensive cost to not train. So I want to put you in a little mindset of, what is it like to be an officer? You know, should we train? Should we do this stuff? Well, what it is, I hire new officers. And from the jump, we take them out and we show them, "This is all the ways you're going to get shot at and die in a car, in a traffic stop. These are all the ways you're going to get shot at and die in a domestic. These are all the ways you're going to get shot at and die in a building clearing. These are all the ways in a school shooting." We tell them that, we show them all the ways they're going to get shot. We try our best to train that out and prevent that. And we know that those officers, that you sitting here, and when I say you, I'm referencing the public out there that's watching too, that they experience somewhere around 1 to 2 traumatic events in their life, whereas officers experience 200 to 500. So we know we're going to put them out there, and they're going to experience these traumatic events. So then, when we put them on the street and something happens, you know, they get into an altercation where they have to draw their weapon and do something, whether it be at a school shooting, or at a church, or a domestic, or anything. There's a lot of things going to happen when that takes place. There's going to be some physical things, some psychological things, but most important, there's going to be some physiological things that take place. The first thing that's going to happen is the brain says, "I don't really need all this other stuff." So it's going to narrow the vision, tunnel vision's going to take place. Well, do you really need all your vision? Yeah, if you're a cop, you do. You need to see where the threats are, you need to see where innocent people are, you need to see where your other officers are, you absolutely need, but it's narrowing. Tunnel vision's going to take place. Auditorial exclusion's going to happen. The brain says, "I don't really need to hear," but an officer does need to hear. They need to hear where the other officers are, who needs help, where the suspect's moving. So, you know, an important thing, a tool is gone. The blood's going to pool away from the extremities, it's going to start saying, "I need to save this part, and I don't really need extremities." Dexterity's going to be gone. Now they've got to pull a weapon and defeat a level 3 safety holster, and they've got to pull out, put the sight in their eyes so they can see, and then try to manipulate a trigger while all this stuff's happening to them. So, I, I, I say to you, or here tonight, if I put an officer back here at any one of your meetings, you know absolutely that that's what they're, they're gonna go through should a traumatic event happen here in your meeting, or at the July third event, or in a school, or in a church, or anywhere. Are you comfortable that I do nothing about that? And I say you, the public, or do you want me to train that officer through that? Because I can't do away with those manifestations, I can't erase them completely, but I can minimize them. I can condition them so that they can work through that problem. And that takes time on the range. So, we, so we actually also teach them this, it's another thing you tell them, if there's a school shooting or in your church, "I want you to go in, and I want you to put yourself, your body armor and you, in between the bad guy and, and the innocents. I want you to exchange yourself as targets." We tell them that, too. And that's not natural, and no way is that natural, and that's the things you have to condition those people to. And there's a lot of them sitting here, and, and they can tell you, we, we do a, a good job of trying to condition them so they can operate and save lives. We actually tell them this, that for years, they said, "Well, police, officer safety is number one, officer safety is number one." There was nothing bigger alive than that. Officer safety was never number one. If that was the case, when an alarm call come at the bank, we would just call and say, "Hey, whenever they're gone, we'll come down and investigate it." No, we get up and we go. We go to school shootings, we do that stuff, because we teach our people that there is a priority of life, that the you, the, the public and the victims are number one, and we are number two. You tell them, "You're number two." And then the bad guy's number three, and we prioritize for that, for them, and that takes conditioning. It's no different than the fire chief having a burn tower, and some of you gotta experience that. Do you think it's natural? Did it feel natural to you to go in that burn tower? Well, that burn tower's not designed to teach people to go save structures. If they save structures, it's icing on the cake, but it's designed so you put them in there, they can save people. That is important, that is our mission, and you have to condition those people to do that, just as much you have to condition my people to go out in a live-fire situation, and that takes time. I have to tax their bodies and their minds, and I have to get them to do that. But I can tell you, when I post that hundred-and-eight years of experience, and, and, and a lot of mine, that training does work. Now, it, it's not gonna work all the time, not, the odds are gonna be against you sometimes, but I've been involved in five, five officer-involved shootings where I was the trainer, the captain over the training division, or the chief, and I was responsible for all those people. Two of those officers are dead, two of them. But, out of two of the other incidents, two officers unsolicited, not by any action of us or asking, came to the training staff and said, "Hey, that drill you did with me on the range," and they named the specific drill, "saved my life, because when it went bad," and your, your brain is gonna go, get all messy, "I did exactly what I was trained to do." I've had two officers come and say, "That is exactly what happened." You can't do that, not training. You can't do that watching a film or, or a PowerPoint. I have used the range as a litmus test. I've, I terminated an officer because the officer could not demonstrate that they could save their own life or the civilians in this city. I terminated an officer for that. So, I used it as a litmus test also, to say, "You, you're not gonna cut it, to do that for the, the people." So, we can ignore a lot of things, a lot of people do, never really happened to you, this is a threat really real. Well, Covenant was just right here beside us, not enough far, right here in Nashville. Couple weeks ago, a guy, Wal, Walon Officer, Dixon Police Officer, was in the parking lot of Walmart, on a detail, a guy walks past into the building with a machete, bashes out the, the shotgun rack, attempts to load it and kill people. That happened in Dixon. So, if you're familiar with the Sergeant Daniel Baker, a great friend of mine, I watched him get executed on his body camera, I watched a guy stand over him, Stephen Wiggins stand over him and execute him. Horrible event happened. You know what caused what that stemmed at? The call was a broke-down vehicle. That's not, that's not bad, broke-down vehicle, and I watched him get executed. But the key, key to this is, Stephen Wiggins was a frequent flyer in Fairview, Tennessee. He was arrested here, and he was put back in an ambulance, 'cause he had to go to the hospital, and an officer in the back of the ambulance, and he beat the officer while he's trying to get his gun from him. So, that exists in Fairview, Tennessee. I just learned today from my staff, if you heard the latest news of the girl on the running track, uh, the walking trail in Antioch, Vanderbilt nurse, and she, just two days ago, she was running, a guy grabs her, drags her off in the woods, attempting to rape her, and shot, shot her five times in the head. That gentleman was in an altercation at O'Reilly's parking lot in a bad drug deal in Fairview, Tennessee. Could exist, exists all the time. So, for us, critical incidents happen, you know, Covenant, Columbine, Aurora, Colorado, churches, you know, all that stuff happens, and we get an outpouring of support, well, officers need more pay, they need more training, they need more equipment. We know the reality is that, that's not real, that's not gonna sustain. It really lasts for a couple of days, and then everybody forgets about it. But I can't afford that complacency. These officers here can't afford that complacency. If they do, someone dies, and we can't do it. We have to train. I don't have a range right now. I'm fortunate over forty-something years of whatever, of mine and my assistant chief relationships with Dixon PD, they allow us to use our range. It is spotty at best. We have to be at mercy of whatever their range stuff is. We had an, a, in October, we had a mandatory range day, a mandatory, entire department, really important stuff, it got canceled by them. No fault of theirs, they just had something else they wanted to do. And I may actually lose access to that range altogether. They're not mad at us or anything, they just have some other things they wanna do that range on, of their own, and we may lose that. So, I posed a question, uh, to one of the complainants in the lobby one day, and I said, "Should something happen, 'cause you're in the county, who do you think's gonna respond? If you have a critical incident?" And he said, "Williamson County." Well, the reality is, the sheriff is a great man, and the sheriff before him, the sheriff for him, were great men, and they've got great staff, but their, their subject have shortages just like everybody, and there's oftentimes, they don't even staff a car in this area. Why would you? It's in the corner, and Fairview's there, and we answer their calls all the time, and it's a mutual aid thing, and we will, we'll continue to do that. We'll, we'll answer those calls. And, uh, it, it happens on our, my passover, I see constantly calls that we, we answer them, especially if it's a critical incident, 'cause if they're out of pocket, we're gonna get there first. We're gonna be able to save people first. So, they actually, yesterday, just came and gave us all KEFABs, so we could be the, one of the plans to the school. The, the, the school, if, if something happens there, we, we are the response. My entire department that is leaving to go do that, and we've got KEFABs, so we're, we're the plan for that. They understand, know that. And I, and I'll kinda close with this. When the gentleman said Williamson County, and I said, "No, it, it really kinda gonna be us." There's been some kick around, some insinuation, that, that someone might sue us, that, that might be on, on the horizon. And, and I will close with this. I'll take it all day, every day, for somebody that's not happy, over the lawsuit where people die. Absolute. I'm here tonight to, to lay all this out, I'll answer any questions you have now, if you wanna reach out to me later, there's nothing that, that's hidden, we have an intention to do this, we believe it's a good thing, we believe it's a good thing for the citizens, it is our mission to protect them, and first and foremost, I have to prepare these officers to survive and live, so they can in turn ensure that other people do. You have any questions?
Chief, could you explain who's gonna be using the range?
We're gonna, it's gonna be police only. We're not gonna have the public out there, because we want a, we want a specific plan, a controlled training sessions where we control, um, w- w- the public, in our opinion, there's some that's unbelievably trained, there's some that's not. I don't wanna take that risk, I don't wanna vet those, I want officers on the range. We will conduct, uh, range trainings with other agencies. You must, if I'm gonna answer calls of Williamson County, would I not wanna train with them? It, it, you know, we have mutual aid with a lot of surrounding areas, with Dixon County, with Hickman County, I would wanna train with those people. Uh, you know, it's consistency in training, it's new techniques and things you go over, so it'll be limited to police. I, I think one of the other things that was, said was, "What about the noise and all this stuff?" Well, that, there's some assumption we're gonna be out there shooting every day. I don't have the budget to go out there and shoot every day. I wished I did, but there's no possible way I can't even afford it. Dixon's range is utilized by several agencies, and there's many days you go out there, and there's nobody on the range, there's been nobody on that range for a week. It is a necessity, departments have them because it's a necessity, it has to, to be a, a tool. We do not have one, we don't have an answer for that. We have just been fortunate to beg, bar, and steal everything we could a- as far as range goes, and we don't know, that's not sustainable, it's not something that's gonna last for us. We need to solve our own problems. And again, I, I say, I think it's the, the, the best possible location I could come up with. We've crammed it in the deepest hole, uh, we're gonna engineer it to be the safest we possibly can, and we're gonna conduct ourselves in a professional manner, and, uh, to ensure safety.
And no city employees and no board members will be on that range?
No. Yes, sir?
Uh, Chief, uh, how often do you, are you planning on scheduling the actual training process out there?
There, there's no possible way to know what that number is, there is no possible way. Because first of all, you can say, "We have, right now, we have a, once a month schedule, we go to the range in Dixon." And, and here's another problem with the Dixon range, or any range, Royal Range, or Williamson County's range, it is a logistics nightmare to get my staff all the way over there, thirty miles away, wherever it is, while we're still on the road. Here, I can have a roll call training where one group that's coming on can be there, do a little fifteen-minute shoot, the one that's, they can do their roll call there, they leave, the one that's coming on can do theirs, I mean, we can, we can manage it. But when you're trying to get people thirty miles away, but we have one a, a monthly schedule, we have, that, that one's a, a monthly shoot, we have two, uh, mandatory shoots, we do for qualifications and night fire, and then you don't know what your problems are gonna be. If you see a training issue, you're gonna go out there and do it. If you hire a new employee, you're gonna go out there and shoot. If you, I mean, there's, there's things that're gonna come up, and there's no way to plan for that, but you have an answer when those problems come up. You can address your problems immediately, go out there, solve that problem through a training scenario, and move on. So, it's, but this idea that it's, it's used all the time is just not realistic.
So, in essence, you try to schedule your entire staff, rotate them all?
We do, you, you know, we, we want all the, the people in the department to get that, and if you have, you gotta go thirty miles away, you're trying to get all these people there, that, that's problematic over time, to, to try to get all those people there. When it's right here, you can run over there while they're on shi, on shift, you can just run over there right quick and knock that out.
Okay.
And, and when I say that, not everything is a four-hundred, five-hundred round per person training day, you literally can get a lot done with forty rounds, twenty rounds, ten rounds per person. If you're a creative instructor, you can accomplish a lot of goals in that.
Great information, very thorough, very appreciative of it. You had mentioned that Dixon is maybe considering doing some other things with their firing range, and that you would lose access to that.
Correct.
If that was to happen, and this project was not to move forward, what would the city be faced with as far as figuring that out for you to still hit your training requirements?
Well, I, I will go and address what that issue is with them. Uh, they're not ready to do that now. We've expressed to them that we're, we're moving forward with this, they're understanding, gracious enough to, but they, uh, th- their desire is to possibly limit just their range use. They have been in existence for thirty years. We, and, and, uh, we, uh, conducted some, some meetings with our engineers, we're gonna have a lead mitigation plan, where we have our lead mined out, out X many years, we're, so we can keep that range functioning, no contamination, we're gonna do that through the, you know, the engineering and a, and a mitigation plan. Dixon has not done that. Um, they are looking at doing that, but in the meantime, they're thinking about reducing the amount of usage, so they can stretch that out to when they're ready to do that. Uh, and that would mean other agencies wouldn't, wouldn't have access to that anymore, it would limit those agencies. So, it's not happening today, and we know there's a small, a window of time, they're still in with us, and, and really, the only reason we have that is just relationship we built with them, and, and, and we're able to do that, but it's not a sustainable thing for us.
And as far as options outside of Dixon, if we didn't have our own facility, there's very limited, I'm assuming, you'd have to work an agreement out with somebody?
It's the same thing, you're, you're, you're trying to ask for permission of people that use their range, and you're, you're subject to their schedules. I will say, two years ago, Dixon PD, we, we partnered with Dixon County to do our insert yearly in-service, and the range, there's eight in-services a year, the range days they give us were three holidays in that, they, they give it to you on holidays, 'cause they're gonna take the premium days, and it was what was left over. So, it's just, it's not a sustainable option. It's something that, uh, has probably needed to be done here for years. Uh, I, I, I will, I will say this, I think several of you were here, or at least know, uh, twenty sixteen Fairview PD had, had issues, they had issues, it is what it is. And when I was brought in, I was tasked to, to fix those problems, and, and I, I picked a staff that has moved forward in all aspects, this, literally, they've killed it, and they've moved forward. You, you've seen that, you've witnessed that, you, you experienced that, and this is one element of what it takes to, to keep that, you know, path forward and not regress into those kinda things.
Anyone else have anything for Chief Humphries?
Again, I'll send you this tomorrow, so you'll have, it's a lot of detailed stuff, you'll have those details, and I'll, I'll be, answer anything you want at any time you want. So, if, if you're done with me, I'll yield my time to, to CEC.
Thank you for all the investigation and information that you've given us.
Hello, my name is Matthew Pfeifer with CEC. Um, I worked with, with Chief and Tom, and I'm here to answer any questions you guys have, and also just explain that this is not just something done on the spur of the moment, we've, we've taken our care with investigating the site, um, we've done the environmental studies, we've done jurisdictional determinations to make sure we know the waters that are on the site and what's required, we've done the endangered species, threatened